Welcome everyone to the Town of Greater Napanee regular session of council for the 26th day of November 2024. Before we get started, just want to apologize to everyone that's at home watching and for those that are in the the body of the council chambers that we ran a little bit late with respect to a closed session. But we're here now and we're going to get started. So again, before we get started, just want to remind everyone that this evening's meeting is going to be live streamed via our YouTube channel. So the folks at home, welcome. If you can't watch tonight, it'll be on our YouTube channel and you can watch it anytime from now to eternity. So again, welcome and we do apologize. Would like to start off with our closed session meeting to do our rise and report from closed session. I look for motion to rise and report from closed session moved by Deputy Mayor Calvers, seconded by Councilor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, the motion is carried. I'd like to report that this evening in closed session, council approved the closed session minutes of November 12th, 2024. Received three reports related to human resources matters and gave direction to staff. Received for information, a report related to a potential acquisition of land and deferred a report regarding an agreement negotiations. Having said that, we'll move on. We'll look for motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented. Moved by Council Hick, seconded by Council Penal. If no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, the motion is carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll start this evening's off, this evening off with scheduled deputations and I believe we do have one scheduled deputation tonight. It's Tony Balasiewicz. Dog licensing voucher program. So come on up, Tony. And I know you've probably been here before, but I always like to go through the, the, the process here. You'll, you'll find that there's a microphone in front of you. In order to talk so the people at home can hear you, you have to push and hold the talk button, which is a button on your right hand side. And when you're done talking, you can release it. And because if you don't, then I get all kinds of nasty emails and text messages saying we can't hear what Tony had to say. So welcome, sir. And whenever you're ready, the floor is yours. Oh, you gotta push the button, Tony. Sorry. And hold it.
I would like to thank council for the opportunity to be here before you this evening. I am seeking a reconsideration of the dropping of DocuPet's voucher program. At its October 22nd meeting, council decided to renew the town's contract with DocuPet. Embedded within that decision was the elimination of the voucher program for licensed dog owners. Presentation and subsequent recommendation to drop the vouchers highlighted issues for both the town and former participating outlets, but were silent on the implication for dog owners. Tonight, I would like to highlight those issues from the perspective of a dog owner. DocuPet's partnership with Renn's Pet was put in place to encourage pet owners to register their dogs by giving them a $20 in-store coupon. This $20 value is significant or significant within the context of Greater Napanee in that it effectively rebated the first year's cost of the town's license back to the owner. What is important to understand here is that we're not talking about just a few dollars. In fact, when added up, the overall value to taxpayers was significant. For example, had the decision been made to not allow access to the benefit when the town started its contract with DocuPet in 2019, the 800 or so dog owners currently in the program would have been denied over $16,000 in rebate benefits. According to statistics, 32% of all Canadian households have a dog. If we assume Greater Napanee is average in that, that respect, the decision blocked or the decision to block the rebate has impacted almost 2,400 households in this community or about 4,800 taxpayers. As less than 30% of dog owners actually register their dogs voluntarily, there are at least an additional 1,600 dog-owning households that no longer have access to the voucher program. Should they decide to comply with the bylaw? This means that the town's decision has taken about $32,000 in potential value away from taxpayers. More importantly, this additional value added has cost the town nothing. The decision to eliminate the voucher program was made in large part because the town felt it needed to be fair to an outlet. The problem is that government decisions, specifically difficult ones such as this, where the town must balance the needs of itself, businesses and homeowners must in the end be based on providing the best solution for the common good. In fact, this criterion was likely a major consideration for the town in 2019 when it moved to DocuPet. To do so, it had to undercut the dog licensing sales model that was in place at the time. Under this system, 60% of total sales were coming from partner outlets located here in the community. Today, there are none. But for good reasons, the town decided to replace that model with the current one that sends much of the local money to national organizations. I would argue that the elimination of the voucher program does not adhere to the best solution for the common good standard. Rather than balancing the needs of businesses and homeowners to come up with a workable solution, this decision supports one outlet over 2,400 taxpaying households. Moreover, the decision not only favored the outlet, it did so despite the fact that the outlet is no longer in the program. And the decision did not even come with an expectation that it or any of the other outlets would return if this change was introduced. The fact that DocuPet could not accommodate the request to take on additional vendors in its program does not mean that there were not other solutions available to the situation. With compliant rates at about 30%, the town should be actively looking for incentives to bring in more dog owners, not push them away. To do this, outlets could have been encouraged to provide their own in-store voucher at point of sale. This would have given them an advantage in bringing back potential customers because they had the initial face-to-face transaction in selling the license. If that was not an option for small businesses, the town could have looked into creating a voucher program of its own. The voucher could be programmed to be redeemed at any pet store within Greater Napanee, albeit that would cost. The town could also provide its own incentive to dog owners by giving them the free first year free. However, none of these options were even considered. Instead, one outlet, no longer in the program complained and the best solution to deal with that complaint was to take it out on 2,400 households. I think we can and should do better. DocuPet's partnership with Renn Pets has a built-in incentive program to encourage pet owners to register their dogs. It is not having the success it should right now largely because the benefits offered by DocuPet are not being advertised sufficiently. In fact, not only does the DocuPet contract provide exceptional value added for the user fees that somebody has to pay, it provides users with a host of additional benefits that can also be accessed, albeit at a cost. And I'd like to emphasize that point off my script is that I'm very critical about user fees and licenses, et cetera. However, this is one of the few where I'm actually getting what I perceive to be more money than I'm paying in in the extra funds. I say this because you do not need to force people to comply with bylaws or programs if they realize that they're getting good value for the extra money they're paying out. And this does that. But you need to tell them about it. The, and deciding to take away a key part of that value has to be done with caution. At this point, I would sum up by saying, the last few years have been extremely difficult for taxpayers. They have been faced with price increases on everything from food, housing, heating, transportation, gas, garbage collection, taxes and user fees. In the coming months, they are going to be rewarded for their hardship and sacrifices by being told they must now dig deeper than they've ever done before. So the question I would ask you to consider when reviewing this request, is this really the best time to be taking away one of the few benefits still available to taxpayers? Especially when the program is bringing in almost $50,000 in value added to the community and is costing the town nothing. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Just hang tight and we'll see if council has any questions with respect to your, your deputation. Council, do you have any questions for Tony with respect to his deputation that he's done here this evening? See, sorry, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver. Brian.
So did I hear you? Like Renn's Pets are no longer, you say they're no longer in this program? Like I know we, we took it out, but are they doing it other places or just not here?
So DocuPet has made a national agreement with Renn's Pets to provide this $20 voucher to communities. The reason why DocuPet is doing it is because the more, the more dog owners they could get into the program, the more money they make. So there's a vested interest in trying to encourage that, that development. So no, there was initially, the issue here is that there were initially three outlets that were providing or selling dog licenses within Greater Napanee. They've all left the program. My view is largely because the money that they're making is no longer valid. Simply because with DocuPet, I can go directly onto the website and register my dog. I don't have to go and get a license. They send me the, once I paid the fee, they send me the license and the $20 voucher. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, you did. I, I thought you were, I thought you were saying when they weren't in the program, that the Renns weren't in the program anymore. I know that's not quite so.
No, no, it's run by DocuPet and you can benefit through the store here in Napanee.
Great, thank you. Hey, thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other questions or comments for Tony before we look for a resolution? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Tony. Madam Clerk, and I know we, we've sort of been through this before and I think we've seen a staff report is, I, I'm thinking there may be an opportunity here that you've heard what Mr. Balasiewicz has said. We don't receive and then we ask that Madam Clerk bring a report back to address some of the current concerns that Mr. Balasiewicz has brought to us this evening or?
Through your worship, staff can certainly do that if that is the direction from council.
Okay, I, I think that's probably the best bet and that way, and that we, we can sort of assess the, the details that Tony had brought to us this evening. So, so we'll look for a motion to note and receive and to direct staff to report back regarding the DocuPet-Renn's Pet partnership with respect to So so we'll look for a motion to note and receive and to direct staff to report back regarding the DocuPet-Renn's Pet partnership with respect to dog licenses or dog tags. That give you enough direction, Madam Clerk? Just give you a second to get caught up. Oh, you're good. Okay, moved by Counsel Shanx, seconded by Counsel Norrie. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, opposed, motion's carried. Thanks again, Tony. Next up, deputations, items on the agenda, which I don't believe we have any. After that, correspondence, items on the agenda, which I don't believe we have any unfinished business. I don't believe there's any unfinished business. The administrative consent agenda. First up, council minutes, regular session of council November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and special session of council number nineteenth and twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there anything in those minutes that anyone would like to highlight or bring our attention to? Seeing none. Next is correspondence for information, items dated November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I know we've all had an opportunity to see the correspondence for information. Is there anything that anyone would like to speak to with respect to that list? Seeing none. Next up, ice surface naming rights agreement renewal. Is there anything in that report that anyone would like to highlight or is there any staff members that would like to bring anything to our attention with respect to that? Seeing none. Activity report, Parks, Recreation and Culture, November two thousand and twenty-four. Is there anything in that report that anyone has seen that they have any questions of? And Counsel Pennell will give Mr. Brown an opportunity to speak later, but did you want to ask a question first, Dave?
Thank you, worship. No, sorry, I was just going to make a statement that the Town of Greater Napanee's Parade of Lights is this December seventh, that's starting at five-thirty, and I'll be leaving from the fairgrounds. So just just a little reminder on that. Thank you.
Yep, great. Appreciate that, Counsel Pennell. Mr. Brown, did you wish to make any comments with respect to your activity report or is there anything in there you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to bring note that we do have a couple of events coming up, the Parade of Lights being one of them, December seventh. Also, this Friday, we have our Light Up the Park event down at Conservation Park. And I just wanted everyone to know that the Napanee Minor Hockey Tournament is back and that's happening this weekend at the Best and Bash Arena. So good luck to all the minor hockey teams from Napanee as well as the visiting teams that will be coming into our community. And yeah, it's great to see that tournament back. It hadn't happened in a few years and so the arena will be full and lots of people around this weekend.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Chris. And I know that because I think I missed out on a couple of skates and there may be even something the following weekend, if I think I'm not mistaken, is there not?
Yes, through your worship, we have more tournaments this year than we've had the last few years, which is exciting for us. We are very mindful of the weekly user groups. They do miss out on some ice time when we bring these tournaments in, but it's a give-and-take situation. It's great for our community, especially the economy, hotels and restaurants and things like that. So you'll have to wait till next weekend to resume.
Yeah, and that's not a problem. We'd like to see the young kids in the arena because there's always smiles on their faces. So thanks for that, Chris. Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Thank you, your worship. But just to reiterate, Dave, Counsel Pennell, they're talking about the Parade of Lights. There was something missed in the program that's been going out advertising it, that the limestone limousine is going to be picking up non-perishable for the Salvation Army. I just thought I'd throw that out there as well.
Yeah, no, and we do appreciate that and and it's always good to remind everyone that they'll be collecting those things. So I appreciate that, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Is there anything else with respect to the Parks, Recreation and Culture Activity Report? Seeing none. Next up is Activity Report, Growth and Infrastructure Services. Is there anything in that report that anyone would like to ask any questions about? And Mr. Nobes, is there anything you'd like to add or highlight?
Thank you, worship. I'll just give a quick overview of the report here. So we've got anticipation of issuing tender for the Water Pollution Control Plant project slated to go out before the end of the year. We're anticipating commencing construction in early, later Q1, once we start seeing the frost come out of the ground. So we're eagerly awaiting issuing the tender and seeing the tender results so that we can put together a budget for council's consideration for that project. We're also seeing the County of Lennox-Nattington, the Lear Study that we've previously discussed. The RFP is closing very soon and staff, town staff and county, as well as the other lower tiers, will be working on reviewing that RFP with the intent to assist county staff with making a recommendation to county council for award of that RFP work. We're seeing seeing progress with the Springside Meadows subdivision preservicing efforts. We've had a number of individuals reach out and inquire about potential impacts to their wells and what avenues might be available if there are adverse impacts. Staff have provided all of the background hydrogeological efforts that were undertaken and groundwater monitoring plans and insurance policies to those individuals. And we've not received any further concern after providing that information. So I think it's been successful so far. We have had some interest in making connection to the new water main that will be going in on Old Hamburger Road. So we're exploring the costing associated with installing servicing stubs to each property while the road is ripped up and the main is being installed. So that'll come back before council because it would be in addition to the preservicing works that were approved. So we likely what we would be looking at, there would be a portion of that or potentially all of that effort would be development charge credits. Given that the main is off-site and we're adding services for existing properties that are beyond the scope of the subdivision. So we're looking at that right now, but our intent is to give flexibility to existing residents to make those connections if they would so choose to do so. We're also looking at Phase Twelve of the Westbridge Estates. So that's to the west of the existing Westerly Limit of Westbridge Estates, north of the park. We're looking at a February two thousand and twenty-five public meeting for that proposed addition to the to the plan of subdivision. All of our construction projects are carrying on with with good progress. Environmental Services is making good progress with the water main replacement behind the Devcor complex on Jim Kimmit Boulevard. And we've had a couple of, we've had one audit and one routine inspection of our drinking water quality management system and our Sandhurst Shores drinking water system. Both went extremely well. We're just waiting, awaiting the Ministry of the Environment final report before presenting it to council and with the anticipation that we would do so at the December tenth meeting related to Sandhurst Shores. And lastly, our Public Works crews are getting ready for seasonal changeover, getting plows ready, getting getting sand and salt ready to go as soon as the snow starts to fly here and finishing up fall leaf and brush collection as well as rounding out any capital works that might remain outstanding. So making good progress overall and just gearing up for the winter ahead.
Great, thanks, Michael, for that detailed update. Is there any questions or comments for Michael, Counsel Pennell?
Thank you, worship. I just have a comment that there will be no curbside pickup of garbage and recycling on Wednesday, December twenty-fifth and also Wednesday, January first. If your collection days are those days, they'll be rescheduled for December the twenty-third and Monday the thirtieth. Oh, sorry, and garbage must be out by seven AM. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Counsel Pennell. Is there anything else anyone would like to ask any questions of or make comment to? Seeing none. Next up is the Fire Department Activity Report, September twenty-fourth through November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And I know Chief Armstrong is here. Chief, is there anything you would like to highlight there? And then we'll see if there's any questions.
Thanks, your worship. One item not on the report really is around an event coming up. It's our Greater Napanee Toy and Food Basket Drive. I'd just like to highlight that this evening, if I may, your worship. Last year, we did over eighty to eighty-five food baskets and we served one hundred and fifty-six children with gifts. Thanks to the amazing generosity of the community of Greater Napanee. We're ramped up to do it again this year and I think it continues to, I know it continues to December thirteenth and it's because of our firefighters and local businesses, council members, residents, that we can make this happen. So we're very thankful for that as an organization. A big shout out to our local businesses. They've truly knocked it out of the park this year and they're sponsoring the Firefighters Calendar Effort, which also goes to providing the support for the food drive and the gift baskets. So we hope to keep those good times rolling throughout the festive season and thank you, your worship, for the opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you, Chief, and you're absolutely right. It's always a very successful event. So puts lots of smiles on kids' faces. Is there any chief questions, the chief, with respect to his presentation or his report? Seeing none. Moving on to Activity Report, Executive Services, November two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Grant, are you going to speak to that?
I am. Thank you, your worship. For Executive Services, we've had a number of things going on this year. I know that our bylaw function has extended enforcement timelines due to the Canada Post-strike. We also continue to work on education materials and work with our partners to prepare for broad education on the Parks Bylaw and Encampment Protocol. In Human Resources, we filled two vacancies for customer service and I'm pleased to say that we have hired a senior bylaw enforcement officer starting on December second. We, of course, were engaged in budgets and we've been meeting with institutional partners on housing and homelessness. And in particular, this this month, we have been engaged on a number of fronts, both with fire, with with building services as well as our institutional partners around managing a private property that has a number of trailers on it with individuals living that is not in compliance with the zoning bylaw and we're seeking to work with our partners to achieve compliance there.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Grant with respect to his report or is it the presentation of that report? Nope, seeing none. Moving on to Activity Report, Financial and IT Services, November two thousand and twenty-four. And Ms. Hamel, I think that would be yours. Did you wish to comment on it at all? And we'll see if there's any questions afterwards.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just briefly, the Finance Department has primarily, of course, been focused around budget and budget preparations. So that's our number one highlight. We also, though, have welcomed two new replacement positions in our customer service department. So you will see two new smiling faces as you come into ninety-nine in advance. So I just want to take a moment to welcome them. Also, we have seen some pretty good uptake in our collections. We send out reminder notices in November and we're seeing about one hundred and seven, sorry, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in collections as a result of those notices that we got out ahead of the Canada Post-strike. So we are grateful for our timing on that.
Your timing is absolutely wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. And is there any questions or comments around with respect to her presentation or her report? And thank you for welcoming the two ladies that are at the front desk there. Now, I've talked to them a couple of times there and they are settling in well and they're absorbing a lot of information in a short period of time. So thank you for that. So. I think that's all the reports. So we'll look for a motion with respect to the administrative consent agenda that council would consent to the approval of the following routine items that the minutes of the regular session of council dated November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four and the special session of council dated November nineteenth and twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted as presented, that the correspondence for information items dated November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four be received, that council received for information the Ice Surfacing Naming Rights Agreement Renewal Report and further that council approved the renewal of the Ice Surface Naming Rights Agreement with Goodyear Canada to October, or sorry, August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine and authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute the renewal of the agreement and that the Activity Reports for Parks, Recreation, Culture, Growth and Infrastructure, the Fire Department, Executive Services and Financial Services for the month of November two thousand and twenty-four, items seven point five through seven point nine, be received for information. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calvert, seconded by Counsel Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, the motion's carried. Next up, items for consideration, eight point one, recommended cemetery updates, bylaw fees and charges for services and contractor agreement for grave preparation. I see Mr. Brown coming up to the front and Ms. McLuckie. So whenever you get settled in there, the floor will be yours. And Chris, are you going to start or is Sonia?
I think you worship, I can start by introducing Sonia McLuckie, our Cemetery Administrator. She's put together a lengthy report on a number of things that we are obligated to do by legislation. So we're looking to make some changes to our current cemetery bylaw and I will let her take the report from there.
Thanks, Chris. And Sonia, whenever you're ready, yeah, you, I see there's a button on there on the right-hand side that says talk. When you're going to talk, you just push and hold it until you're done talking and unless, of course, you want to see me get yelled at, then you don't have to. But whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship. So I, when I came on to the town, I got looking at the bylaw and there's some changes that the BAO has implemented on their website, a template that all municipalities or any cemetery operators to follow. So my recommendations for the changes in the bylaw are all stemming from that. One of the big changes is removing the fees out of the bylaw. So right now, if we want to amend the bylaw or the fees, we have to go through the BAO. So the fees are not part of what the BAO actually approves. They don't need to see that price list. So they are recommending that we remove that price list out of our bylaw and put that in with the Fees and Services bylaw so that if we ever have to amend the fees, we can do that on our own time without having to go through recommendations and that from the BAO. So that's my my first thing that I'd really like to do. All of the other changes within the bylaw are just kind of cleaning it up and making it a little bit more user-friendly so that the general public can understand their rights and that when they purchase a plot from the town. The second thing that I, I guess the third thing is creating an RFP for a contractor's agreement for the preparation of graves. Right now, it's just a verbal agreement with the contractor to come in and do work in the cemetery, such as digging plots for caskets. Most of the other stuff is done by the town staff. But without having an agreement, there is liability issues there on the town. So I would like to implement an agreement that goes out maybe on a four-year term and I would work with the Treasury Department on putting that out and making sure that all of the specific information is in there and then put that out and and see how it goes.
Great, thanks, Sonia. Just hang tight there. We'll see if we have any questions from council with respect to your report or your presentation. Counsel Pennell.
Thank you, worship, through you. Thanks, Sonia, for coming and talking to us today regarding this. As I was reading this, I found a part that kind of disturbed me on this and what it was, was that if somebody bought a plot and then when there was the time to dig it and they come into obstruction like a root or a rock or something like that, that they get charged extra for that. Could you maybe talk to us a little bit more about that? Because I think that's a little bit unfair that it should be one fee for all throughout the whole cemetery. And if the tree root happens to be there, it really shouldn't be the responsibility of of the person who purchased that plot.
Through you, your worship. Yes, so this was something new that came to light just this summer. We actually came across a plot that was purchased during the winter months, which happened to be purchased around a big tree. And the contractor that we had had said to us, you know, had I have known that it was going to take this much extra work to get this plot opened, I probably would have had an additional fee attached. So with redoing the fees and charges bylaw, I thought that it might be something that we could add in there, but I do agree with you. It's something, if we're the one selling the plot and we're aware that there could be potential rocks or tree roots there, then perhaps we shouldn't sell that particular plot. But with some of these, it's the unknown when you get in there and then there is that additional work. And if the contractor does charge us for that additional work, then the town is going to be responsible to pay for that additional work opposed to the plot owner.
Thank you. I've never had the opportunity to purchase one of these, so I'm not sure how it works. But when somebody does purchase, is this all explained to them? Is it in the contract that there may be additional fees? Or is it, is it just a hidden fee that comes up when it, when it happens?
So this would be a brand-new fee added to our fees and charges, so we haven't had it yet, so I haven't had to, uh, mention it to any of our purchasers that are buying a burial plot. If, um, it's something that we keep in there as a new fee, then it would definitely be something that I would bring to their attention.
Okay, thank you, and, or, or maybe we can discuss not having that fee. So, thank you.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Counselor Penal. So it would, I, I guess as a regular course of business, um, somebody comes in and says, I'm looking to buy a plot. Um, that would be a normal course of business to say, yeah, normally, this is what the price is. Um, if there's any other hidden problems that we have, um, those costs could be incurred by you, and, and then would that person, I mean, obviously, the hole's probably already been dug, or, or not necessarily, I guess, the hole wouldn't necessarily be dug. You, you may not know for, for many, many years afterwards. Am I correct there?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, that's the only questions I have. Uh, does anybody else have any questions? And, and, uh, Counselor Penal, did, uh, you wish to, uh, speak to any kind of remedy, or are you good with, uh, what, uh, Ms. McLuckie has told us with respect to notifying the, uh, potential purchasers?
Uh, thank you, worship. I, I would probably like to have more discussion on this. I'm not sure if we have to bring this back or, or see what, what the conversation can be about this, but in, in my mind, let's say that I purchased it, the plot today, and, and as you were mentioning, your worship, uh, in ten or fifteen years, it's dug open, and then I get that fee, so. And, and you know, this is not the nicest time to be talking to somebody about needing more money and, and stuff like that, so I, I don't know where we should go from here, um, but maybe, maybe we can revisit this and have it come back before we do the bylaw or something along those lines.
And, uh, Madam Clerk, I think she wishes to weigh in.
So through your worship, just for council's awareness, um, currently, our public notice policy states that any bylaw that impacts fees and charges, we are required to do minimum public notice period, advising residents of the proposed fees, and then have the opportunity for that feedback to come in, for council to consider the feedback, for council to make any changes to the bylaw based on what they hear, uh, prior to that bylaw coming into effect. So at minimum, we would be following that process. Um, so there would be at least that one additional meeting opportunity for further discussion of whether any of the proposed fees should be amended.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Penal.
Um, thank you, Madam Clerk. I, I think I'm good with that, then, if we could see what the, uh, what the feedback may be. Thanks.
Yep, and, and thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that, so, um, and I think that's, that's a good plan going forward, and, and we'll, we'll check and see what the feedback is, and, uh, and, and that'll give, uh, Ms. McLuckie an opportunity to, to reassess it, should that need be there anyways, so, but, uh, thank you. Is there any, uh, Deputy Mayor Cowher?
Yeah, everything else looks good, but I, I have to agree with, uh, Counselor Penal on that. I mean, I buy a plot today, and I'm not planning on, uh, checking into it for several years down the road. It's an awful hit to the family after just losing, losing a loved one to find out there's an extra fee when they thought everything was all covered and paid for. Um, I'm sure that we, we dig a pile of plots that they don't hit anything. Um, I think it's just one of those gambles you take. You don't know what's in the ground until you start to dig it, so I, I agree with Counselor Penal on the removal of that extra fee. So we'll talk about that when it comes back up.
Great, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowher. Uh, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sonia, thanks, thanks for this. Um, one question I wanted to ask you. For folks who have already owned a burial plot in the graveyard, and they want to now inter ashes, say, from another relative on top of someone who's already buried in that plot, does the town charge anything extra for that?
Um, through your, uh, worship, um, so right now, when, uh, a plot is sold, and if there's a casket already in the ground, you're permitted to have four cremations on top. So if we are going to do, um, an urn burial, uh, there is an interment charge for that preparation.
Just an interment charge, but no charge for the grave site itself. That's already owned by that family or whatever.
That's correct. So what we, uh, what we do when a family comes to us, and, um, if the plot has already been used, and they wish to enter another family member in their plot, then we have to go through the interment right process, so we would have to get authorization from the person who owns the plot to put that body there.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Martin. Is there any, uh, Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, through you, your worship. Um, I see that the, the price of cornerstone, that's for four cornerstones. It's not per each cornerstone. Okay. Just, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Great, thanks, uh, Counselor Hicks, Counselor Schenk.
How many cemeteries do we look after that this implies to?
So currently, the town has forty-one cemeteries licensed under our name. Out of the forty-one, we only really have three active, actually four active cemeteries, so it would be Riverview, Riverside, Roblin, and Sand Hill. Um, we haven't had any burials or plots sold in Sand Hill, um, that I know of, but Riverview, Riverside, and Roblin are, are active. Um, Riverview only takes, um, burials if a plot in-ground has already been purchased. There's no other space in that cemetery for in-ground plots, but that's where our column bariums, um, are well-needed. Um, I sell probably, in Riverview, we're almost sold out of spaces right now in our column bariums. Um, and then over at Riverside, we do, it's fully, um, active, so we do in-ground burial plots plus the column barium.
Yep, great, Counselor.
The only reason why I'm asking that is because when somebody in the audience might be going ahead and seeing this, because I know we cut a lot of, uh, minis-, uh, a lot of cemeteries, so when they see the town cutting on like it's St. Albans in, in Adalbert Town, that you do not inter anybody in there. We, all you do is just cut the grass there, correct?
That's correct.
Because that's where my plot is, and I've already purchased it. I was just going, well, my goodness, it's gonna cost me a lot more for that. Yeah.
Thanks, uh, thank you, Counselor Schenk, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Counselor Schenk, uh, raises a point. So Roblin does have space as well for in-ground burials, for caskets, and is the town actually looking at any property? Because eventually, we will be running out of space, and there are people who prefer a traditional method, if you will. Are we, are we proactively earmarking space anywhere? Have we looked at that? Just, I don't need to know where right now, but is it something that's on the radar? Thank you.
Uh, through your worship, I can answer this a little bit. Um, so we do have lots of, uh, property at Riverside Cemetery, um, so we're in really good shape there. Um, we have looked at, um, certain cemeteries that we do, uh, own and operate, and whether we can expand. Um, so that will obviously come in further reports to council if we wish to purchase some more land, um, that are adjacent to our existing cemeteries, um, but that is about the extent, uh, to this point.
Great, thanks, uh, Counselor Hicks, uh, Counselor Schenk.
So just so I understand this, because I know I'm gonna be asked this, so therefore, so a single grave, all right, is gonna be nineteen, eighteen hundred ninety-eight forty. So that was the first, you know, bill that somebody will get, and then if it's a winter burial, there's a surcharge for two hundred and eighty-two. That gets added also on top of that. So you're over two thousand bucks, and then if you go down for staking fee or monument, uh, but, uh, it, all these are there on top also, correct? So it's an addition, addition, addition down the line?
Yes, um, through you, your worship. So the way that the fees are laid out is winter burials, um, take a lot more work to get through the frost. So that's why we put that surcharge on there for that. Um, the other, uh, just the regular burial, like burial plot purchase, uh, the increase there is because our contractors that are hired to come in and do the preparation for casket interments, their prices are going up. So in order for us to, because that money, um, for an in-ground burial is in and out. We don't get anything out of that. It goes right to the contractor. So this, um, increase that you see for those, that's where that's reflected. Um, we can, um, if the ground is too frozen, then we can put the bodies in the vault that we have, um, for storage, but again, there would be, um, a fee for, for that as well. So unfortunately, it's the, the, the era that we live in right now that there's fees, um, but the fees that we're asking for, um, are also helping to cover costs associated to the town.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor.
The only reason why I'm asking this, because it's, of course, it's new to me, uh, but, uh, so the single grave, that's a contractor, eighteen hundred ninety-eight dollars that he gets paid for digging a hole.
Um, actually, so what that eighteen hundred dollars, uh, let me just get there. Let me get up there. Um, so what is incl- yeah, so that's your total overall price. If you take the price at sixteen eighty, and within that sixteen eighty is six hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is your care and maintenance fee that goes into a trust account that we don't touch. So you would take, uh, sixteen eighty minus that care and maintenance fee, and then that is normally what the contractor would, would be charging.
Uh, thanks, Sonia. Um, we'll just let, I think Counselor Schenk's doing a little bit of math there, so. Yep, are you good, Mike? Okay. Yeah, we gotta get you to push the button, though, Mike, because.
Sorry, uh, no, I was just looking at, you know, what it actually a contractor makes for digging, so, uh, that's what I was just looking at, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, thanks, Mike. Is there any other questions or comments for Sonia? Let me see, Counselor Hicks, I think you got one. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. Um, rather than outsourcing this, have we looked at what it would cost to do it in-house? And you're nodding your head. I'm, I'm assuming you would. It, it, it is cheaper than for the town to outsource it?
Um, through you, your worship, we have thought about it. So our in-ground burials are about anywhere between ten and fifteen a year. So it's not extraordinarily high, whereas our urn interments in-ground and niches are way, way higher. Um, in terms of getting our own equipment to do the preparation for the grave sites for caskets, we would have to then look at getting lowering devices. Um, we would have to have a tractor with a bucket. Um, we would have to have a truck that can haul the gravel away off-site, and then bring it back, uh, topsoil, grass seed, all of that stuff. We're, we're already doing the grass seed, but, um, it's the, the time and the equipment that we don't have that we could look at getting. I would suggest that if we had thirty or more burials a year, definitely it would be worthwhile investing in, but because we have such a low amount of in-ground burials, it's, it's cheaper to outsource it.
Yep, go ahead, Ange.
Thank you, your worship. So, okay, so that explains it. This isn't just for a mini ax to come in, dig a hole, and then they go away. They dig the hole, they remove the dirt, they, it, it's presented to the family, and then they come back again and do, okay. So that, that puts, that's, puts it in context then for, for cost. Okay, thank you very much.
Great, uh, great, thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else for Sonia before we look for a motion? Seeing none, we do have a, uh, recommendation the council receives for information, the community and corporate services cemetery administrators recommended cemetery updates, re-by-law fees and charges for services and contractor agreement, RFP for grave preparation report. And further, that cemetery administrator forward the draft cemetery bylaw to the Bereavement Authority of Ontario, BAO, registrar for the comment and approval, and further that council directs the cemetery administrator to bring the cemetery bylaw to council for comment and approval once received back from the BAO registrar, and further that council direct the public notice of the proposed fee changes be issued in accordance with the public notice policy, and that subject to public comments received, the cemetery's fees and charges for services be effective in conjunction with the cemetery bylaw amendments in early twenty twenty-five, and further that council approves the implementation of a contract agreement for grave preparation, and further that council directs the treasurer to put out an RFP for a contract agreement for grave preparation, and further that council approves the agreement being signed by the Chief Administrative Officer, CAO, and Chris Brown, Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, on behalf of the town, once the RFP has been awarded and proper documentation as set out in agreement has been provided by the town, by the contractor. Oathful, but, uh, moved by, uh, Counselor Penal, seconded by, uh, Counselor Schenk. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with three, uh, Deputy Mayor Cowher?
Nothing really to do with that, but I do wanna, I do wanna say a thank you to the, uh, people looking after the cemeteries. It's, uh, oh, that's all I seem to hear all summer long, is just how beautiful the job they're doing, the, 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 the care and, and respect they're doing for these cemeteries is just, just phenomenal, and, uh, we've got a really good, really good staff looking after them, and, uh, the public is definitely noticing it. I just want to say thank you.
Yep, but nicely said, Deputy Mayor Cowher. Yeah, we receive, uh, comments, uh, quite regularly, so I appreciate that. Um, is there anything else before we look to call the vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, the motion's carried. Next up, Town Hall and Market Square project plan, and Mr. Brown, I think you're gonna speak to that.
Uh, yes, thank you, your worship. Um, so just wanted to bring this, uh, report forward. It's gonna be one of, of many, uh, throughout the process. Um, at regular session meeting, October twenty-second, uh, council was presented with the vision for Town Hall and Market Square. Um, so the adopted vision for Town Hall and Market Square includes removing hazardous materials from the first floor of Town Hall and removing interior walls to create an open event activity space. Uh, the council install at least two oshroom facilities on the first floor of Town Hall. The council repair the steps of Town Hall, inclusive of a single set of steps, uh, accessibility elements and beautification efforts in and around the steps. The council remove the, the fountain at the front of Town Hall to ensure space could be opened up in the form of a plaza. They could be used by the community for activities such as music events, markets, et cetera. The council pursue the installation of a cupboard area at the back of Market Square, similar to the covering at the Bellville Farmers Market, uh, that would facilitate activities such as the farmers market in Greater Napanee, uh, and the council encourage events or markets to be run by third parties and not town staff. Um, so with all of that, um, what I've tried to do in this report is, is just, um, level-set expectations for some priorities in twenty twenty-five. Um, these are, uh, and these are recommended, and of course, we can, we can look at these priorities, um, and make adjustments to them as you see fit. But these priorities in twenty twenty-five would be to establish a Market Square task force to aid in the decision-making and recommendations to council for the duration of the project. This task force, um, I see being, um, not only members of the community, but members of council, staff, um, and some of the committees that we have. Just to get a well-rounded, uh, viewpoint and vantage point, we would want to include, um, members of the community that would be using the space as well, uh, to have their valued input. Um, another priority would be to do the Town Hall roof coating, um, putting two coats on the metal pitch roof to, um, expand its life, um, and which you would have heard about in budget presentations. Um, again, the, the Town Hall front steps, redesigning the front steps to include landscaped stone raised garden beds on each side of the center steps into the building. Asbestos abatement, uh, removing all those hazardous building materials from the first floor of Town Hall in preparation for construction. Um, we would want to hire a design architect through public tender to develop initial design concepts that align with our requirements, our goals, and our standards. Um, and then lastly, in twenty twenty-five would be to hire a general contractor through public tender to execute the renovation construction, um, for the approved design, and we would need to hire that design architect in order to have all the documentation that we need to go out for tender for a general contractor. So there are a few, uh, things on the, the complete list of the vision that aren't included in twenty twenty-five. They are mainly the, uh, cupboard area at the back of Town Hall, uh, as well as the plaza out front. And so my, uh, thinking in this is that we would focus on the roof and the step- And so my uh, thinking in this is that we would focus on the roof and the steps as immediate concerns, um, in terms of exterior parts of the building. And then we would um, focus our attention inside on the main floor. Um, really working at getting the first, um, first floor completed, um, in the interior of the building so that that's uh, ready to go. And then we would focus our attention um, early in twenty twenty-six um, to some of these areas outside. Um, again, we're probably looking at hiring a landscape architect uh, to give us some rendering, some idea of what we could make the front look like. Um, and we'll continue to work with um, some, some partners as well, as that was in the resolution, um, to, to see what we can do. Um, we wanna do as, as much as we possibly can with the reserve funds that are there. Um, but we're also gonna be needing probably some additional help, um, whether that be through partners or grants. Um, we know that um, what's in the reserve balance right now, uh, it, it might not cover everything. Um, so that just takes me into the financial implications. Uh, what we know now, the reserve balance is at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We know through budget quotes that the Town Hall roof coating is going to cost, and again, these are budget quotes, thirty-seven thousand dollars. The Town Hall front steps will cost sixty thousand dollars, and the asbestos abatement will cost seventy-five thousand dollars. What we don't know right now is when we go out for a design architect, um, what that will cost. And we don't know uh, ultimately, based on the design that they come up with, that we all agree on, uh, what the renovation cost will be, uh, once the general contractor is hired. Um, so just in the cost that we do know, we know that that reserve balance is gonna come underneath three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I just want to counsel to know that staff will be diligent in pursuing these funding opportunities through grants that become available. There are definitely uh, grant opportunities out there for renovations such as this. Um, so we're gonna be after those, um, to help bolster that reserve balance. Timelines are, are very difficult for large-scale projects like this with many different aspects, so I didn't really wanna put in the report specific timelines, but i- it is our goal to accomplish those priorities set forth uh, in twenty twenty-five calendar year. Um, uh, lastly, uh, you know, we do wanna do consultation with the public. Um, it's gonna be a very important part of the design process, uh, how the interior of this building is gonna look, but also how the exterior is gonna look uh, moving forward. Um, you know, feedback from these community groups or clubs or committees and vendors, it'll help shape how we design the interior and the exterior of this uh, of this building and the Market Square. Um, and with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to hear them.
Great, uh, thanks, Chris. I know we'll have some questions. I, I see your hand there, Dave. Go ahead, Counsel Penal.
Uh, thank you, Worship, through you. Chris, thanks a lot for this report. Um, one thing I just wanna talk about is the establishment uh, of a Market Square Task Force. And um, I'm gonna get some input here for you, from you two. But this is uh, different than the Market Square Committee. Um, and we are going through a committee review as well. But just as I know that there is members of the Market Square Committee that do watch these uh, these meetings, is that uh, it is my understanding that the Market Square Task Force would oversee the priorities of two thousand twenty-five. And then once we get the Market Square, or the, the committee review, if there's more for the Market Square Committee to do, would be to continue on with, with recommending other projects to council. Is this, is this the way that I'm reading it correctly?
And I think Mr. Grant wanted to weigh in there. I know he's reaching for the microphone anyway, so go ahead, Matthew.
Uh, thank you through you, Worship, to Counsel Penal. Um, so it's uh, our intent um, to um, make the task force development part of the committee review, and bring that forward with a recommendation of a task force. Uh, I'm going through that work as we speak. I would absolutely see a role for the Market Square Committee, whether that be part of the task force or something different, is the, the subject of ongoing work that will come before council.
Thank you. Good, thank you, Mr. Grant, and thank you, uh, Counsel Penal, and I saw Counsel Hicks's hand.
Thank you through you, Your Worship. Uh, I have two questions. The first one is to Mr. Brown. So the asbestos abatement on the main floor, that is simply the removal and the making safe of the space. That is not new drywall, trim, anything on the exterior walls. It's just the removal, and then it's gonna sit until we have a design.
Through you, Worship, so that is correct. Um, in that pricing, uh, we did add in a few things. Um, so they can move, uh, you know, electrical, uh, they can reroute uh, HVAC. Um, so that, that is included in that price. Also included in that price would be once they are done doing the indoor air quality testing as well. Uh, so we've added a couple of different things, but essentially, as soon as that asbestos abatement is done, uh, that is basically a gutted first floor of, of Town Hall. Um, at that point, um, we would go out for a design architect to come in and, and work with the space to see exactly, uh, you know, what our options are in terms of how the space could look once it's fully completed.
Yep, go ahead, Ange.
And then my next question is, I guess, to you, but also to the room at large. What are we doing with twelve Market Square, which is the white building? Do we not have to come to some decision on that particular space in order to really make the best use of the entire uh, area? Like Market, Market Square as a whole? Cause it's a bit of an eyesore. So do we not have to come to a decision on whether we sell it? Act, like actively pursue a sale or tear it down? What, what do we?
Uh, I think Mr. Grant was gonna weigh in. I think we do have resolution, resolution on the books with respect to that, but Mr. Grant, will you not?
Sure, I'll uh, through you, Mr. Brown, I'll start off, and if Mr. Brown or Mr. Knows has anything to add. Um, so uh, the resolution is uh, to seek sale of that property. Um, I do know that we have interest in that property. What we're looking uh, at right now is to solve the power issue. Um, so the, this building and twelve are connected by a power line. I know that Mr. Brown um, has been diligent in following up um, with the power company just to seek a resolution to that. So uh, that is in essence, what we need to do is sep- make sure the buildings are on separate power. Uh, and then we'll be uh, in a position, should it be council's will, uh, to put the property up for sale.
And I did read that in the resolution tracker report that follows, and thank you for the reminder, because yes, I do recall that now.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Hicks. Uh, Mr. Knows, did you want to add, to add to that?
Yeah, thank you, Worship, uh, just for council's awareness. We do have a, uh, an onsite meeting scheduled with Hydro on uh, December tenth, actually, so we've got, finally got some good movement there uh, with getting the, the connection separated.
Uh, thanks, Michael. The best news I've heard in a long time. Uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowher.
Yeah, through you, Your Worship. So the generator that's uh, across the street that also powers this building, what's uh, are we gonna be relocating that over here, or how are we gonna deal with that?
Through you, Worship, uh, we would look to relocate it and reuse it if, if at all possible. Um, certainly another element in our, in our investigation and analysis, but it's uh, certainly we'd look to, to retain it. Um, i- if it's not serving any purpose for the, for twelve Market itself, uh, we'd certainly look to, to uh, take that back and, and either put it in storage or, or uh, reactivate its use for town purposes.
Yeah, cause if I'm not mistaken, did it not at one time rip, be actually right beside the building here? Cause the plug and everything is right there, or was right there.
Okay, thank you. Great, thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowher. Is, did you wanna weigh in first, Chris? Or is there anything else, any other questions for Chris, uh, with respect to his reported presentation? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation the council received for information, the Parks, Recreation, Culture and Town Hall Market Square project plan report. And further, that council approved the project priorities for twenty twenty-five as outlined in the report. Moved by Counsel Norrie, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Thanks, Chris. Uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to uh, the, the work in twenty twenty-five. I think it's, it's money well spent, and I, I, I'm excited about it, so. Uh, next up, community grant partnership with Community Foundation for Lennox and Addington, CFFLA, and twenty twenty-four grant recipients. And I see Madam Clerks going up to the front, so Jess, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Through you, Worship. Um, as you will see, as an attachment to this report, we have received the annual report from the Community Foundation for Lennox and Addington as to how the ten thousand dollars allocated by council was distributed to local organizations. At the same time that we received that annual report, we also received a request that council consider changing the scheduling of when those grants are distributed, um, moving it from the current cycle of, I believe, September up to the spring so that it aligns with all of their other granting cycles, and they only have to convene their board once. Um, staff are generally supportive, understanding the administrative burden that this is placing on them. However, we note that we cannot um, guarantee that council's budget will be adopted in time for that early spring grant cycle, so we would be looking for if council is supportive of this. In theory, uh, for some sort of agreement, committing the town to maintaining that ten thousand dollar per year allocation through this term of council and into the first year of the next term of council, just given that the first budget of an incoming council is on a very tight timeline with the election timing. Um, and then allowing any further uh, renewals to be at the discretion of the next council. Um, if this were to be done, we would also need to do some pretty targeted um, public awareness on it as organizations who've received this funding in the past might not be looking for the application in the spring, although that is when all the other grant applications open. So if there's any other questions, happy to take those.
Thanks, Jess. Is there uh, any questions or comments, Counsel Hicks?
Through you, Your Worship, thank you. Thanks, Jessica. Um, so the people that received grants in twenty twenty-four just received them in September of twenty twenty-four, and now they're going to have to put their application in for spring of twenty twenty-five?
Through you, Worship, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Hicks, Counsel Schenk.
Could you tell me if uh, maybe the mayor or the deputy mayor maybe answer this too? Uh, what is the grant application, or what is, what is the county budget for grants? Do they do grants anymore, or, cause I know that they never used to, but are, are, do they still do grants?
Uh, did, you wanna weigh in? Uh, they do, uh, and, and I, I just haven't got that number, but we just spoke about that not that long ago, and they've got it set up. And there's a grant that is done through, is it Naturally LNA, maybe? Yeah, it's the Naturally LNA, yeah. That, that, there's four separate ones for each of the lower-tier municipalities, and I think it might be five thousand, Mike, but don't quote me on it, but I think it's somewhere in around there. But, but they do do, Naturally LNA do actually uh, do some granting process, uh.
I, I'm not trying to be bah humbug here, all right? But all I'm saying is, is that county Lennox and Addington gets the money from the lower tiers. They're giving grant money. We're giving grant money. And everything that I see, don't get me wrong, I know this is gonna come out wrong, but it says LNA, then the, the group, then it says Lennox and Addington, and the group. You know what I mean? It's Greater Napanee. It's just, am I being petty here? But it's pay, getting paid by the taxpayers of Greater Napanee, but it always seems to go where something, and I'm not saying that they didn't do it correctly or anything else like that, but out of the four, all right, two of them has LNA in front of them. So I'm saying, well, I'm calling, maybe should LNA be paying for, you know, contributing towards that and, or am I being petty? I'm not sure. I just.
I, I, I think, I'm gonna let Deputy Mayor Cowher uh, uh, take a swing at this, so go ahead, Brian.
All right, just because they use the name Lennox and Addington doesn't mean it's actually operated by the county or directed by the county. It's no different than your Lennox and Addington County General Hospital. Um, it uses the LNA name. That's pretty much the extent of it. It's like the Napanean District Rod and Gun Club. I don't see any money coming from the town.
And, and the county foundation in and of itself is a completely separate entity from the county of Lennox and Addington. I think they just, they use the name Lennox and Addington because they disperse their funds throughout the county, and, and I think, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, it even goes even further than that, if I'm not mistaken, so go ahead, Jess.
Through you, Worship, I can't speak to that point, but I will just note that as a condition of the funds that the town gives to this, one of the conditions is that the recipient groups must operate their programming within the boundaries of Greater Napanee and serve Greater Napanee residents through their programming.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, and, and I can attest to that, that, that ten thousand dollars that we put in at the town of Greater Napanee goes to uh, Napanee recipients, not somebody in Loyalist or Kalatara or anything like that, so. Uh, Counsel Penal.
Uh, thank you, Worship, through you. Madam Clerk, I see on the letter here that there's a hundred and seventy-five dollar processing fee for this, and I know that we've talked about this before, but I'm just wondering, I don't believe I remember seeing this added into our budget, or, or is it? It's a small fee, but.
I'll let the treasurer speak to that.
Uh, thanks, uh, Counsel, probably, I was just thinking that as, as I read this report, I don't think it was either in the draft budget, so we should make a room for that.
And amendment, I, I know it's a small fee, uh, in the scheme of things of, of the whole budget, but uh, we talked about it last year, and I, I, I do believe we said, oh, we'll catch that for this year, so now we're catching it. So if we could add that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Penal, thank you, Ellen. Is there any other questions or comments? Counsel Hicks.
Through you, Worship, and I noticed that as well. So my question is, would that fall under contracted services? Like insurance, or I, I'm just wondering, like, where do you slot something like that? Because it is an agreement or um, an understanding that they'll administer.
There, uh, there are a few different options that we have for that. So the actual donation itself still lies within council's budget um, as a donation line. Uh, I expect we would keep the admin fee still within council, um, but would put it under likely a contracted services.
Thank you. Just, I was just curious, like, where that would fall in the, the line-by-line. Thanks.
Yeah, perfect. Uh, thank you, Counsel Hicks. Is there any other questions or comments? We do have a staff recommendation, if there's not. Seeing none, the staff recommendation is that council receive for information the community grant partnership with the Community Foundation for Lennox and Addington, CFFLA, and the twenty twenty-four grant recipients report. Further, that council approve the request for CFFLA to adjust the annual grant intake period from fall to spring to align with the CFFLA's other grant cycles. And further, that in order to accommodate this request, council authorize the mayor and the clerk to execute an agreement with CFFLA, committing the town to maintain the ten thousand dollar per year allocation for community grant funds for the twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven fiscal years, with further extensions to be at the discretion of the next term of council. Moved by Counsel Schenk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowher. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Uh, thanks, Jess. Next up, council resolu- has, council resolution tracker midterm review. And Jess, and I see Mr. Grant's coming to the front, uh, were you gonna start, or was Matthew gonna start?
Thank you, Worship. I'll get us started, and then I'll ask the, the town clerk to weigh in where necessary. Um, so uh, you may recall that uh, through council resolution, we were asked to bring back an update on the council resolution tracker, which would be uh, direction received from council through the various uh, meetings of their term of office. Um, so uh, you'll see in the attachment that there are currently fifty-eight outstanding resolutions. Um, and staff are seeking direction uh, from council to confirm which of these resolutions, uh, at this point in your mandate, uh, you would still like us to focus our attention on. Um, given that some of the priorities of council may have shifted, uh, we may have had um, new business um, enter our agenda. In addition to that, we have six resolutions that have been identified as requiring additional council direction. So uh, this is where staff just wants to make sure that we are clear in your direction, that when we are able to uh, engage in the work and complete that direction, that we, we've done so in a, in a way that is uh, to meet your expectations. Um, I uh, I don't know that we should do a line-by-line on fifty-eight separate items, but I'm happy to do that if, if you would like us to. Um, but we do have um, some elements that uh, require no further action. Um, and some actions of limited ones that we would be waiting on other people um, to be able to complete that, and some that's um, I believe that we feel may want to be taken off the list. Um, with that, I'll see if the clerk has anything that she would want to add, and I think uh, for the purposes of this meeting. Um, with that, I'll see if the clerk has anything that she would want to add. And I think uh for the purposes of this meeting, um, it would be uh advantageous um to uh see if there's agreements on uh the latter.
Yeah, so through your worship, in this report, we have um separated the resolutions by category. There are three resolutions that um staff would be recommending to take off this list. Um, as no longer a priority or believed to be um superseded by other direction or just simply passage of time. Uh, and then many of these resolutions fall into the bucket of we are doing work on them. We do plan to bring you an update in the near future. Um, for example, six of these resolutions are related to advisory committees, and once that matter is addressed through the CAO's forthcoming report, those should all be tied up. Um, so it's not necessarily 58 individual reports coming to you to clean this up. If you endorse the staff recommendation, there's also six items flagged at the end that we would be looking to bring separate reports back at a future date, just to confirm council's intended direction and priorities. But i- if you disagree with how we've uh bucketed these things, certainly by individual motion, you could direct that a resolution be handled differently than how we're proposing to do it here.
Thanks Jess. Um, who wants to start? Um, does anyone want to start or do you want me to make a suggestion? I, 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 I think, so we have six that you're looking for some direction on. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Through your worship, that's correct. Not necessarily tonight, unless council has a strong feeling about it tonight. It would be more um we know short-term accommodations is at the top of the list, is a large discussion. We've also had bylaw enforcement's priorities massively shift this year. So if this is still a prerogative council, we would like to confirm that direction before we um put a lot of department resources towards that initiative. Um, but that doesn't need to be decided tonight. Our intent would be to bring you a report to seek that direction through a specific staff report. Um, because I, I think six is a pretty manageable number of items to do that on.
Great. Uh, Mr. Grant, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, and through you, Mr. Mayor, there, and there's also um as yet an undetermined number of these resolutions, which might be impacted by upcoming discussions on individual service levels. Um, by uh, by department and service within the municipality. Um, so this is the list and the way it's bucketed as we understand it now, understanding that as uh the clerk has mentioned, some of them will be bucketed together and be able to remove on the list and off the list in bulk, and some we may be able to fold into um other initiatives that we'll be bringing forward that uh are a bit broader in scope.
Great. Uh, thanks, council. Uh, any suggestions or I'll make the suggestion if it's helpful that why don't we take a look at the six that you're gonna bring a report back on? Can you sort of check them off for us and maybe we have a quick discussion just to see uh the appetite for uh seeing a report to come back with them? Is that helpful, Jess?
Through your worship, we are in your hands on this matter.
Well, let's take a look at the six and I think number one was uh, oh, Council Martin, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to ask a question. Thank you, Mayor. Resolutions, resolution tracker from 2022 to 2026. You monitor, you were checking. What about resolutions from previous term of council that? You know how at the end it says can be revisited by the next council? So just, just question that.
So through your worship, we started this project and I'm gonna say spring of 2022, and at that point it was a not insubstantial undertaking, just to go back to the start of this term of council. I think it would be quite a lot of staff time and effort to try to track down any further into the past. Um, so we figured the beginning of this council's term was a good clean date um to start and, and make this be a forward-looking project uh rather than trying to get into um prior terms of council and a lot of staff turnover um in that window of time.
Yep, good, Council Martin.
Thank you. Uh, but part of the, when the part of the resolution says to be revisited by the next term of council, is that not something that should be done?
Through, through your worship, I believe I know which resolution you are referring to and um yes, I I don't disagree with you. I, I do think um we can look and see if there's any other resolutions, just doing a search for that specific set of like language. Um, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the um, the other element I would suggest is uh resolutions of previous councils, I would suggest should be taken as recommendations and not necessarily direction to the current term of council. It would represent a different body. And so I, I would think that it would be appropriate that if there is a member of council that wishes to revisit a resolution of, of a previous council, which you know, would be made up not of the same individual members. I think it would be appropriate to um put forward that resolution again to put it um as a, as a priority of the current term of council.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I shall do that.
Thanks, uh, Council Martin. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you, uh, Ms. Walters. Council Penel.
Thank you worship through you, Matthew. If a, if a previous council made a resolution, why would, give, give us some scenarios why it wouldn't have been done during their term? Why, why that resolution wouldn't have been handled? Because if we always hear the will of council and obviously there was a resolution made at the will of council and then it wasn't followed through, and that concerns me.
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. So there'd be a variety of reasons why things might not have been able to be carried through it, at anything ranging from responding to provincial legislation to emerging issues such as encampments and the like. Um, and uh, I think the fundamental principle um of why ever the work wasn't done, I don't know that it would be appropriate for one term of council, but to be able to try to bind a future council. I think it's entirely appropriate. Um, if uh work couldn't be completed for whatever reason, for that to be revisited um by the new council with its new membership to ensure that it still maintains that will. An example I'll use um would be, say, short-term accommodations. Um, should it be the will of this council, depending on when they bring forward a resolution in their mandate? Um, for example, say uh this council brought forward a substantial body of work that we absolutely want to see um that piece of legis- or that piece of municipal legislation in terms of municipal accommodation tax, and for whatever reason, we weren't able to carry it through. You might find a different composition of council with a different perspective of where they want to take the community where they don't favor that. And if staff resources are continuing to be spent on something like that on a, a previous priority, it might come at the expense of a priority of the existing mandate of council. I'm not sure if that answers your question, counselor.
In a roundabout way, I guess it did. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Council Penel. Council Shank.
So, so just so, how do I say this correctly? So we don't go around and around and around. So are we gonna discuss the more clarity needed for, from council? Cause the STAs, we already brought that up. We, it was defeated. And, right? There was four against three? No? No?
No, you're referring to.
You're, yeah, you're referring to something different. Other than the short-term accommodation by law, it's the uh sorry, Council Hicks, I overshooting you there, but.
No, that's all right.
You weren't pushing your buttons, so.
I, but I, the only reason why, cause I'm going through this and like, I mean, uh, one, one of the first ones was about the birds and uh, and having chickens in the backyard and because of the concerns with avian flu. And now with the avian flu that's hitting the West Coast right now, it's a major, so that's, that's done. It's not gonna ever happen, not until they so as far as I'm concerned, it's, it, until they this, might as well take that right off the books because until they can look, ha- solve the problem with all the concerns that is happening in the West Coast right now, the avian flu and even being transmitted to individuals also, uh, we're not gonna allow something that would have health reasons. But instead of going through 58 of those, how can we make this that we discuss the six? That I can get home before 11 o'clock tonight?
That's uh, that's what we're gonna try and do here right now. Mr. Grant.
So uh, I would say in, in the interest of allowing Council Shank to return home at a reasonable hour. Um, I, I would think that um it will bring back uh separately uh the individual things to seek council direction. Um, and just to tie into the previous question, um, sometimes sort of items that might be controversial. Um, it might be the will of council to address an issue, but uh there might be um situations where council doesn't find their way to a resolution. Um, for whatever reason. Um, and sometimes it just doesn't come across the finish line. And in terms of why we don't take things off the list, um, staff won't take things off this list until and, and until unless council tells us we can take it off the list.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, just to touch base back on that very first one there, the backyard poultry, we need to really start enforcing that bylaw. There's a huge outbreak with the uh Norway rats. Uh, as you can see, if you look around areas, you'll see rat traps set up, poison stations set up. These backyard chickens, they, they do nothing but attract rats because it's free food for them, right? So we do have a bylaw, or we did have a bylaw that uh stated how much area you need to have, to have livestock, and I don't, I don't think that should just go away. I think that should be continued forward, but that's just me thinking.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Calver. Um, Jess or Mr. Grant? We, we're hearing this number six. For the, for the most part, 58 of these resolutions are in various forms of being resolved or um are are waiting on something outside with the exception of these six. And I, am, am I correct with, with that assessment? And if I am, I think it would be advantageous to bring back a report with respect to these six that are dictating where they are, how long they've been on the books, and what's the reasonable option of getting these things done in the, this term of council for better lack of word. Would that be a fair assessment?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say uh with the 58, uh, many of them are in various uh iterations of, of where they are in the work. Um, and at some point, uh, if we find that there's additional uh work that's brought on um to staff, we would ask you to prioritize those numbers if we thought some of them were at risk of being delayed. Um, with respect to the six, um, we should absolutely bring back a report, not only um about how do we accomplish these particular items? Um, but getting some clarity from council about whether or not you still want them. Um, because uh with things that change, um, whether it be circumstances, um, outside influences or things that are beyond our control. Um, just getting a reaffirmation, yep, we still want them and, and this is sort of the order that we would prioritize them. Um, some of the items with a list this size, um, in addition, this comes to in addition to the regular work. And so there might be occasions with some terms of council, not saying this term of council, but some terms of council where resolutions might get to a point where it would be difficult to um tackle all of them. Um, and so if we get to that point, we'll bring forward a list. So just to um make a short story long, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would suggest we bring back a report uh identifying this is where they're at. Uh, confirmation that you still want them and then confirmation on next steps.
I concur with that assessment, uh, Council Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. Uh, I'm going to focus in on one particular one, and it's not short-term accommodation or municipal accommodation tax. It is the Community Improvement Plan. And the reason I'm bringing this up is we've heard tonight on a report about the Market Square Task Force. This document, the Community Improvement Plan, is key to the entire downtown core. We didn't even, when we had the downtown advisory committee, it's something that should have been looked at in conjunction with the BIA, which is now defunct, downtown advisory committee. We never even got to this point. This is something that I really think um that Mr. Brown and Mr. Nobes could perhaps be looking at with the CAO. Because the incentive is there to uh, for, for private business to get involved and really have a say. So this, this is a launching point, I think, for the whole discussion about the market square and how this should be the jewel in the crown of the downtown core. Right down to what the garbage cans look like, the park benches look like, the streetlights look like, Christmas decorations. Seat, like all that seasonal stuff, building improvements, accessibility, there's funding that can be made available. So I, to me, that is a definite priority considering what we just discussed regarding the market square. So, and I'll just stop right there, but that's one that I really, and I'm also questioning about the transit, Deserano Transit. Um, I see here that we've got funding or a, a mandate until April 1st. Um, that's not very far away. So I think we need to have a plan for that, cause there are people that do rely on it.
I, I suspect we're going to see a report with respect to Deserano Transit in the not-too-distant future. And just uh for, for my peace of mind, was uh the CIP, was that one of the six you had in your list there, Jess, or? Yeah, that's, I kind of thought much uh Council Hicks got talking about, I feared it was probably one of the ones that was on the list, so. Um, Mr. Grant, I see you had, you had your hand up.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, you are correct. We intend on bringing forward a report on the future of Deserano Transit. Um, as well as uh the various options uh in front of council about, you know, if and how uh we might continue uh support for that particular program. Um, with regards to the Community Improvement Plan, uh, I think it would be appropriate. Um, in, in some instances, as we're bringing forward um recommendations for advisory committee, uh, one of the recommendations that I've made in the report that I brought forward to you previously was with respect to terms of reference and mandate letters. And there's an opportunity there to embed the principles of something like a community improvement plan in, in multiple different activities that the municipality is doing, including, including uh, in terms of reference and mandates for, say, a task force, uh, whether it be for economic development or whether it be for uh Market Square and the like.
Great, thank you, uh, Mr. Grant. Is there any other questions? And, and of course, I'm going to state the obvious, probably Jess, can you go through the list of the six that we're going to see a report on? And then I will open up the council to see if there's anything else outside of that six that they want to have a discussion.
Sure. Through your worship, technically two of these are about short-term accommodations, so it's actually only five. Um, but one of the questions would be um has councils' direction or priorities around short-term accommodation enforcement changed, given our um priorities, the, the large outsized impact encampments are having on our enforcement staff, we may have a different discussion around that in the new year. This would likely be a report that comes in the new year, not to December 10th. Um, there was a resolution back in spring 2023 directing staff to review the um agreement for construction and maintenance of county roads and bridges. Looking for direction, whether that is still a priority of council for staff to do. Um, the draft Community Improvement Plan to be incorporated into the budget. Um, whether that's something we still want to uh pursue the development of that plan. Um, there was a resolution around directing staff to solicit proposals for alternative uses of the train station building. Um, shortly after that happened, we received a deputation from Morningstar noting um, they do have a half building lease there till 2028, and it is they spoke about the importance of that lease to their program. And uh, so this direction has been left a little bit in limbo since that point. Does council want us to look at the other half of the building, noting that a lot of people might not want to use half of a building, um, if the other half is occupied? Or is that something that can come off and uh the Deserano Transit agreement?
Sorry, I was trying to write them down as you're going there. Thanks Jess. So we know the ones that we're going to see a report on, I suspect. In the not-too-distant future or early into Q1. Is there anything else on the list that anyone has any questions or comments or concerns? Uh? Um, go ahead, Council Shank.
So my, my comment was is that uh the county approve uh or the council approved the agreement for the construction maintenance, county roads, bridges agreement for the three-year term. Uh, when this has happened, we had a time there was, was on the board that was only gonna do go for one year and then they were gonna opt out of the county road system and, and it was all kerfuffle and uh that's when I've been, that's how long I've been preaching to know exactly what it costs us to do the county roads. Whether we're in the right ball field, that's accurate record-keeping, what we are, what we aren't, what our income is. What are we charging for the whole nine yards? That's why I asked for that in 23, so uh still waiting for that. So when that, when we get that, then Ellen will be happy and everybody will be happy.
So uh through you, Mr. Mayor, um specifically with respect to uh value for dollar for, for county roads. Uh, I would say. I would say the ability to be able to action that kind of request was something. That I identified in my ninety day review and it's and with the reorganization, it's designed to be able to for us to collect that kind of data so we can make that kind of assessment. So I would say in a roundabout way, we are empowering ourselves to be able to address that and similar questions from council.
Go ahead, Mike.
The reason why I'm saying is because it started the beginning of this year, you know what I mean? Of maintenance records and other ones. So maybe at the end of this year, we might have a better idea and especially at the end of twenty five. We should have a really good handle of what's going on, what isn't the whole nine yards. That's I I'm aware of that, but I just, I don't want that one to be. By any means thrown out.
No, and it doesn't sound, it sounds like it's on our to do wish list. So I appreciate that, Mike, and thank you, Madam Clerk for doing that. Is there? Any of the other ones that are questionable that anybody has any questions about? Or maybe want to add to that list? I I know, like I say, I know most of the vast majority of them are in. Varying degrees of being resolved one way or another. So but I think these are the six that we really need to to focus on at this point. So go ahead, Mike.
And I'm the one that said wanted to be home by eleven. I think we should look at all avenues of like, you know, our municipal buildings, like you're doing, you know, that review also. Thank you, Matthew, is that? If there's a half, if somebody's interested and we could rent. Half of the via train out, let's rent it out. If we can't and there's no money in it. But even if we got a certain amount. A month, you know what I mean? It'll still offset its money that we don't have. And you know, if we can get in the long term leases in some of our vacant old municipal halls, you know, I mean, to cover some of our costs. We should definitely look at that. And when we go into, when we have the new procurement. And budget person, you know, I mean, they're the avenues that we can look at, but that's, I hate to. Not rent out half because council said no, but somebody might be interested in it. You know what I mean? How it's marketed and how it isn't marketed, what we can do.
Mr. Grant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I would say with the work that we're doing on creating the catalog of municipally owned properties, that would show up on that list. That in conjunction with my intention to bring forward a a fees and charges review, just to see where we're sitting. I think both of those would not only identify. You know, are our fees and charges in line or does council want us to revisit some of those? And are there opportunities with the properties that we own, whether it be vacant or otherwise, to make best use of either facilities or land? And if indeed council still wants to retain ownership of those.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else? And if not, we do have a recommendation of Madam Clerk. I'm not sure whether we need to adjust that recommendation, but we'll. I know you've got direction that you're probably going to need anyway.
Through your worship, based on what I've heard tonight, I don't believe there is any need to adjust the staff recommendation.
Okay, well, we do have a staff recommendation that council received for information, council resolution tracker midterm review report in further council endorsed the staff recommendation within the report. Regarding which outstanding resolutions to prioritize in twenty twenty five is what we have for a recommendation. Do we have a mover? Yep, go ahead, Counselor Shank. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks and Counselor Shank. I think you wanted to talk to.
That's my, Jessica. And Matthew, there's a lot of other resolutions here that I find totally redundant and are not needed anymore. So I don't want to expect that. Please don't do that to me tonight, but. In a future time, Mr. Mayor, if we could kind of go ahead and if we could take these, of course, we have them at the next meeting or whatever, say yes, no, whatever. Just so we can drop this from fifty eight down to something that's a little bit palatable. Some of them are outdated. Some of them, you know, may maybe further discussion on a shorter night.
And 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 there's nothing that I don't think, and please correct me, Miss Madam Clerk, if I'm wrong, but there's nothing to preclude us. I know at the end of each agenda, we have an opportunity to read through these things. There's nothing to preclude us to start picking away at them. In each and every agenda, say, listen, I seen this on there. I don't think we need that anymore. What's what's the process for getting that thing off? So I think we can do that, too, and that way we're not going to get overly inundated with fifty eight at a time, right? So. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, worship. Following up on that, some of the fan of Excel. Could I get the whole report in an Excel? Could you send it to all of council in an Excel format? And here's my suggestion. We all read it at our leisure. And at some point in Q one, Madam Clerk will pick a date and she'll add a column. And every counselor has to go through and put in from one to fifty eight. Their priorities on what they'd like to see. Is this something that would help you narrow it down for you as to, or what are your top ten? So that we could at least have a starting point? Maybe we're all on different pages and maybe we're not.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hicks, I think the essence of what I'm hearing is. Is there some way that we could come back, whether it be an Excel spreadsheet or something else, to prioritize the list? See if we want to, for lack of a better term, cull the list. Candidly, you won't get any argument from me. But we're, we're happy to do that. And let me take that away and work with the team and see if I can't come up with a process similar to what we did with the budget process, saying like, is this in or is this out? And we'll find a way where council can revisit those and decide what is still on and maybe give. Staff a sense that, you know, given all the the competing priorities. Please don't, we want you to prioritize these. These would be second tier. These would be third tier. And these would come off the list if that is the will of council. And as I mentioned previously, nothing comes off that list until you tell us it comes off that list.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Hicks. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else? We do have a recommendation on the floor. Seeing them, we'll call for the vote all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. The polls, motions carries. Thanks. Thanks, Jess. Next up, eight point five affordable housing proposal by County of Lennox and Addington. And Mr. Grant, you're going to speak to this, and I see Mr. Nobes coming forward as well.
Just bear with me while I pull that up, Mr. Mayor. So before you, council will have. A a general proposal from the County of Lennox and Addington that it's sent out to all lower tier municipalities. About whether lower tier municipalities are interested in supporting a forty two unit social apartment building. Included in their request is that land be provided free of charge by a lower tier municipality. So that is the general request about whether or not we're interested in 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 general terms about participating in something like that. You'll find that the report I provided is is more specific than that because both with the last term of council and then revisited through resolution of this term of council. Is in relation to a very specific property and we have had conversations with the County of Lennox and Addington administration. With regards to a two point three acre parcel of property. On the former Sutter Development Lands, part of a larger fifteen acre parcel. And so this evening. We would be interested in direction of, in general terms, are we interested in entertaining? Support for an affordable housing project with the provision of land? And then specifically, would we be interested in continuing discussions on that specific two point three acre parcel of land? Inclusive, included in the report would be the costs, the opportunity cost to the municipality. So. In my mind, it would represent a donation that would have a certain cash value to us, whether it be. Money that we'd have to expend or foregone revenue. And so on those two particular items, I think that would be desirable for administration to know the direction and the will of council on those items.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I get just before we get started, I just. As I was reading through the report and then this evening I had forgotten that we do have a moratorium on the disposition of land. Would this piece of property fall within that mandate? And I guess what screams the next question is, is. We've asked for a report to identify. What pieces of land would be available to be. Dispersed, I guess, or sold. Are there any other options, I guess? I I know that this would probably be the creme de la creme. But is there any other options and are we jumping a gun a little bit on it by? Jumping ahead of our moratorium on 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 selling or dispersing of pieces of property?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, you raise an interesting point. So. I think if I'm understanding you correctly, the the work that we're we're doing ongoing. Would represent options that we may not even know that we have in terms of participating or participating in a project of this nature. And it may be the specific land we've discussed, or there might be an option related to other. Properties that we might hold that would also. Be suitable for this kind of project, should council wish to participate in it. And it might be prudent to, I guess. Wait until we've concluded that work to figure out what all your options are, if you're interested in in understanding. The full context of this ask and what your options are in relation to what you can provide.
Thank you. And the only reason I bring that up is is because there may be other options. It's just, we just don't know what those other options are right now. So. But I'll open up to the floor to see what what council's thoughts are, but. I I think we want to continue to keep this conversation alive and well to see. If there's an opportunity to work with our upper tier government. I just don't want to get boxed into a corner either, that there may be, there may be another piece of property, there may be other opportunities out there. That we've not thought of because we just don't know they exist yet. So that's just my personal opinion on it, but I'd be willing to, Counselor Shank.
I totally concur with what the mayor said. First of all. If this is the exact same piece of property I'm thinking about, there was interest on this certain parcel by other developers, was it not? And you have a gated community fairly close and then you're going to put a low income housing unit or affordable housing unit. All right, in that same area. And doesn't, didn't. Other municipalities of the lower tier with the ambulance bays that they got and everything else, didn't they have to, didn't the county have to buy that land? And then we're giving land. I'm not trying to be Joe Humbug here, but I I agree with maybe looking at other. Different locales or different areas rather than one specific area. You know, that might be because it's only a portion out of a larger parcel that might be developed also. So where can we put? Affordable housing, all right, that's not going to impact. Because we know of the complaints already in a certain location, all right? That with the neighbors around the problems that they're having, I just want to, don't want to have another problem that might be going down that same line.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So and and I'll ask Mr. Nobes to weigh in on that. And and it's. Land use and where council feels is appropriate to put a building like this is certainly a matter of discussion. I think also part of those options is if you sever off a piece of the larger piece of developable property, it may. Have an impact on the law configuration and. Desirability of of purchasing the rest of the land that we might have. And I I don't know, Michael, if you wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Grant. And through you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that this parcel is a an odd configuration today. It's not, you know, perfect, nice, clean rectangle or a square or anything to that effect. It's. It's bisected or it's bounded rather by the former former spur line on the north side and it's got. Partial frontage on Camden Road and partial frontage on Newburgh Road and Crowe Street. It's a decent sized land holding, but it is a different configuration. So if we're carving out a piece of land ahead of a fulsome. I'll say. Plan of subdivision per se or or fulsome development plan for the balance of that land. We might be precluding ourselves from seeing the development of the balance of those lands. To its maximum potential, I would say. So it's it's certainly something that staffer are currently looking at is what's the best location that would. Potentially, if if that site is selected in general, where specifically there might it make the most sense to? See this, see this occur. But as as Mr. Grant alluded to, and and as as his worship had mentioned, we are still working through the. The the land listing and cultivating a land disposition strategy. So we're we're targeting. March twenty twenty five for that. There's quite a bit of an undertaking to to get through that work. So we're we're hopeful to have have that completed for March of twenty twenty five and we can. Be in a much better position, make a recommendation to council specifically on that parcel with the understanding of. Where we might have more interests in in land holdings in other areas that may may achieve the same effect.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
So Matthew, when will the report be done for the the land, you know, the landing, all the land parcels that we currently own? You know, just so we could, is that the end of March?
And and I'm sensing, I'm sensing conversations with our upper tier government aren't necessarily time sensitive. There's nothing, I don't think they're. Looking for an answer next week or even next month, I don't think. So I do think we have a little bit of time. I'm just. To be prudent in in our own business, I think, I think maybe. To our advantage to to exactly see what we have available. Inclusive of of what we already know that we have. Does that make any sense? Or go ahead, Mr. Grant.
It does through you, Mr. Mayor. And I think if it's the will of council to make sure that we ensure this conversation continues. We could certainly have the conversation in general terms to talk about. The the type of lands, the footprint of land, the configuration of the buildings that they're sort of considering to have a an idea. Of when the 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 land listing is completed. If we have a better sense of of the options available to accommodate the request. Almost like a puzzle piece, we might be able to take a look. It might be this property, it might be another property. But I can certainly continue to engage with county officials on the nature of their project to sort of. I guess, fine tune the specifics of their request and don't make it necessarily specific to this particular land. Make it inclusive of this particular piece of land, but see what our options would be based on specifically what they're looking for.
And I think it's fair to say that they're probably looking something that would be available within the serviceable area. So that sort of would narrow it down as well, I would think. So.
Yeah, you worship that that is correct. So the development of this scale certainly would be very challenging on on private services and would be. Certainly called into question by by staff, whether or not that would be considered compatible with within the rural rural area. So this is certainly very much focused in in the the existing urban serviced area.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nobes. Is there Deputy Mayor Cowherd?
Yeah, thank you through your worship. I agree, we should do a really good hard look at what we've got available for land because. Like you say, that chunk out there is a fourteen acre. It's it's got some, it's got some really good value to it. It may be something we should be looking at getting on the market, but I I think we need to take a real good hard look before we look at any land to give away. Keeping in mind that, you know, you're you're looking at a sixteen million dollar build. To build this building, the five hundred thousand dollar annually to maintain it. And, you know, one point two million annually to look after everything, including the mortgage payment. So. That's and that's a hundred percent on tax backs, the back back payers of tax or the backs of taxpayers. So. There's, there's a lot of things need to be looked at, but I definitely think we should be able to, if we're going to continue forward with this idea, find a better piece of land to put it on. Because right now, Palace already spends over four million dollars on homelessness and. How much more can we continue to spend? So need to take a look at it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is there anything further before we look for a Madam Clerk to assist us with the? Resolution or motion, sorry, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wouldn't be in favor of doing this. Until our our moratorium is up on on selling community land, municipal land. We're supposed to be doing a review of our property. I don't want to give anybody an advantage, even the county. And and we know there's other interest on that property. So. I certainly want to, wouldn't want to discourage the county either from building affordable housing and depending on a number of things, like how many residents of Nappany are going to benefit, or are they bringing in residents from some of the other municipalities? I think it's a little bit unfair of them to expect us to put our development fees aside, not charge those, and then want us to donate the land. And then, you know, I I would want to know exactly how many benefit, how many residents in this town would benefit from that project before I would even want to consider that from the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Mark. Go ahead, Mr.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll ask Mr. Knopes to step in if I've I've misspoken here. But so we would give up development charges on on most affordable housing projects, as I understand, or a portion of that. And so the decision itself to give any land specific to affordable housing comes at a development charge cost. The, and so that decision, if if we're going to provide that portion, would would come at that cost with with any developer. The the giving or gifting of land would would definitely be an opportunity cost for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any other comments or questions? Sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Thank you, worship. And just to elaborate on Mr. Grant's statements and just to clarify and and provide awareness for council. Other municipalities are exempt from collection of development charges. So with it being a county led project, we would not be able to collect development charges since it's a county project. We understand their intention is for affordable housing development. However, the county could set rental rates that included in the table within the report that may slightly exceed the the amounts listed. Therefore, they, if it were a private developer, then they would not immediately qualify as an affordable unit. So given that it's the county, they're automatically as of right exempt from development charges. If it were a private developer developing an apartment building of similar similar stature, and they had rental rates included as per the schedule, then they would be exempt. But if they, you know, slightly exceeded those rental rates shown and did not explicitly qualify as affordable units, they would be subject to development charges. So there's, there are some considerations there. I mean, i- it's likely that the county would be setting rates that are very much in line with this and and as of right would be exempt. But just just for clarity, if it's a county led project, it would be automatically exempt from the payment of development charges as of right.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knopes. Is there anything else before we look for a motion? Councilor Penel?
Thank you, worship. I I through you, I do believe I heard somebody speak of that, maybe it was yourself, about how the county is not looking for a decision on this. But when I read the letter, they were asking for us to get back to them by November 14.
Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the the county is aware of the timelines, and I have let them know when when this report was coming forward. In in terms of getting back to them, I would suggest, depending on where council lands tonight, that we're open to discussing this project. We haven't necessarily landed on on a parcel and that if it's the will of council that we would like to engage in discussions about the specific needs of the facility that you're looking to build. And then we would see if we could identify a compatible parcel, which could include the parcel they've identified, but doesn't necessarily include the parcel they've identified.
Sure. Okay. So as long as we keep the communications open, we'll get back to them, say that we're willing to to talk further about this. You know, we speak that homelessness and and housing is responsibility of the upper tier. But I do believe that we have a responsibility to help out in this as well, similar to what we did with healthcare. The problem's not going to go away unless everybody throws their hand into the ring, hat, sorry, hat into the ring and and get working on this. So if we can work with them, it'd be fantastic to to be be able to provide some of these housings. Now, when I, when we look at affordable and we look at the pricing, it still needs some work on that. It's, but that's for another day.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Penel. Is there anything further? Madam Clerk, look to give us a hand with respect. I know we're going to note and receive the report from County Affordable Housing Request and further council direct staff to continue to engage in conversations with our upper tier government.
Yes, through your worship, I I think what I've heard from the room is that council received the report that council directs staff to continue discussions on an affordable housing project with the County of Lennox and Addington to acquire more information about the anticipated property needs associated with the project and to identify any other compatible properties. And further, the council direct that any consideration of the disposition of land to any party, including the county, be deferred until the completion of the land sale bylaw and land disposition review that council has requested from staff.
I think that's general conversation, the way it happened, Madam Clerk, and I couldn't have said any better myself. Is there anyone who would like to make that by motion? Councilor Shank, seconded by Councilor Hicks. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the report or the discussion that we've had with respect to this? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motions carried. Next up is bylaws. Bylaw number 2024 dash 0068 to appoint a municipal law enforcement officer with respect to winter parking. Look for motion to put it on the floor, moved by Councilor Norrie, seconded by Council Deputy Mayor Cowher. Ready, first, second, and finally passed this 26th day of November 2024. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. We also have bylaw number 2024 0069 to appoint a municipal auditor. Look for motion to put it on the floor, moved by Councilor Penel, seconded by Councilor Shank. Ready, first, second, and finally passed this 26th day of November 2024. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Information reports from members. Are there any members that want wish to provide verbal or written information updates with respect to external boards or committees that they are appointed to? Seeing none. Inquiries, inquiries with respect to any members of council making inquiries of staff. The only inquiry I have, Mr. Grant, is with respect to KPMG. And I know that we've harassed and bugged you. But it is getting along the tooth. Can you give us any update with respect to that?
Yes, I can. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to report to members of council that I am in possession of the report, which has been broken into two pieces, one about a review of a specific incident, the other about a wider program. I have those in my possession. I also received earlier this evening a legal opinion that speaks to considerations that council will want to be informed about with respect to the release of these documents. And in putting that together, my instruction to the solicitors that council had indicated to staff that they would like maximum transparency in this matter. And so that is the direction that we have proceeded on. So there will be a requirement to bring that opinion to council just to discuss the contents of the report and direction on any of those legal considerations. And then followed by the release of those reports. And I'm pleased to say that as of this evening, I'm in your hands about when exactly you would like to have the meeting to review the legal opinion and then the release of the documents publicly.
Great. That's all good news, Mr. Grant, and we're glad to hear it. And we'll see, we'll getting that before the public ASAP. I I I'm excited to to finally put that behind us. So thank you very much for that update. Is there anything else members of council would ask, like to ask or task staff with respect to this evening? Seeing none. Are there any notices of motions? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Seeing none. None. Is there any announcements any members of council would like to make tonight? Councilor Hicks.
Thank you through you, your worship. First of all, shout out to Communities in Bloom. I had a most enjoyable, although short, time with them doing the planters on Center Street. Those ladies know how to get it done. So thank you for that. And also, just a reminder that the downtown shopping party is happening on the evening of December 13 from 4 till 8. And I know for a fact that the local businesses will greatly appreciate all the support. There's going to be individual stores will be doing in store specials and all that good stuff. And I'm can I preempt Counselor Pennell about the parade of lights on December 7?
Absolutely.
And the light up the park coming this Friday, which should be really good with the North Fire circus performers coming. And so I'm going to be there with my grandson. It starts at 5:30 on Friday night. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. Is there, are there any other announcements? Deputy Mayor Cowher.
Yeah, I would just like to to thank all the town staff that have put up all the lights downtown and the light poles and the parks and whatnot. It just looks absolutely fantastic. And I'd like to thank all the downtown businesses that have done their own decorations in their storefronts. It looks absolutely beautiful when you go down there at night. Take a drive downtown. It's, it's really nice. It's a, it's a breath of fresh air to see all the storefronts done up and the street light poles look good. Like I say, all the lighting looks really good around town. Staff have done a great job. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowher. Yes, Christmas has arrived, I think. So is there anything else? Next up is CEO remarks. Mr. Grant, is there anything further you'd like to say this evening?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Worship, or Mr. Mayor. Just touching on the KPMG report, I I would like to apologize to council on behalf of staff and for our consultants who put that together. It, you know, council's wish was to have this wrapped up in a matter of months, and it's dragged on for quite some time, and that was unfortunate. But so I do apologize for that delay and and I appreciate your patience.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Councilor Shank.
Matthew, you don't own that one. Since you've been here, you've been after them like you wouldn't believe. And staff have been after them. They've had every excuse in the countryside. So Matthew, we appreciate you coming here and working here and being diligent and getting it all done. So I'm not going to let you take that one. If if you take it, I'll shut up. But that was one that you you don't, you don't need to own that one. You've done but nothing but anything to try to get it done. So you don't need to apologize for that one for any means. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shank. The forward calendar. I know we've all had an opportunity to take a look at the forward calendar and, of course, the council resolution tracker, which we had a fairly robust conversation about this evening. Is there anything in those two documents anyone would like to, Councilor Penel?
I think, thank you, worship. Through you, on the forward calendar, I would just like clarification if we're still having a budget meeting on December the 3rd.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is our intention to bring that forward to council on the budget on December 3rd, specifically to discuss some of the items that were in the maybe list and get council's direction on that. And then seek council's direction on if they wish to proceed with passing the budget in in the coming days, or if they wish to approve in principle the items that they have indicated they have an interest in and deferring decision until January, when we have more information on what the rate would be.
Great. Thank you. And also, I just have noticed since the last forward forward calendar that the budget bylaw, the taxi license bylaw, the stop sign bylaw, the finance policies and the alcohol policies all been deleted off of this board calendar. Just wondering if they're for future, if they're coming back, or what's going on.
Through your worship, based on the priorities list and all the outstanding items, those are now sitting on Q2 2025. As we have a lot of other higher priority items sitting in Q1 2025, it does need a little bit of additional work, but they're not gone. They're just realistically not as high of priority of some of the other work that we know we need to complete in Q1.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Penel. Is there any other comments, questions with respect to those two documents? Seeing none. Look for motion for a bylaw to confirm proceedings, the Council Corporation of Town of Greater Nappany, moved by Councilor Hicks, seconded by Councilor Shank. Ready, first, second, and finally passed this 26th day of November 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried, and motion for adjournment, moved by Deputy Mayor Cowher, seconded by Councilor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, folks, and we'll see you next week for a budget meeting.